Good evening, everyone. We have a few folks to remember tonight. The first person we want to remember is Bruce Charles Warwick. He was born December 23rd, 1932, here in Newburyport. He graduated from the Newburyport High in 1951, and he went on to serve as a corporal in the U.S. Army from February of 53 to February of 55. Wonder if I'll remember that. Thank you. He was a truck driver for Graf Brothers, and we remember him because he was a City of Newburyport Water Department employee. He retired from the City of Newburyport in 1997. The other person we want to remember is Erford C. Fowler. He was the devoted husband of Paula Fowler of 64 years, born in Portsmouth in 1938. He was a graduate of Newburyport High School in '56. He enlisted in the Air Force and proudly served his country from 1956 to 1960 with a rank of Airman First Class. He worked for the Department of Veteran Affairs in Boston, where he was a program manager for homeless veterans and was instrumental in obtaining grants to develop housing for homeless veterans. He was also a city councilor of Newburyport from 1993 to 2007, and served with various other city organizations. Let's take a moment of silence, please, to remember both gentlemen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk Jones, if you would call the roll, please.
I'd be happy to call the roll for the city council meeting beginning at 7:00 p.m. on February 27, 2023. Councilor Cameron is not here yet, on his way. Councilor Donahue.
President.
Thank you. Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor Lane.
Here.
Councilor McCauley.
Here.
Councilor Preston.
Here.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Wallace.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Councilor Zee.
Here.
And Councilor Shan.
Present.
We have 10 present, one, I'm sorry, 11 present. We're all set. President.
7:02, right on time.
Thank you. Are you the only one to vote?
Yes, Councilor Donahue, you're the vote. All right, Clerk Jones, any late files?
We have four late files. We have a Communication 465, which is the street paving plan for 23 through 28 FYs. We have Order 142, which is amending Chapter 562 on building code fees, giving the city council certain rights. Order 430 has both an emergency preamble and 430 without the emergency preamble. That's with respect to waiving the fees. Ordinance 142 actually authorizes the city council to do so. The order actually does so. And there's also a memorandum from Andrew Port on those waiver fees. And that's it right now.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
Roll call.
Waiving the rules. Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Donahue.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. So for those online, please raise your Zoom hand while the clerk goes to get the paper from the door. Please raise your hand now, so when he brings it back, I'll cut off any folks that don't plan on speaking. So if you want to speak from Zoom, please raise your hand now. All right, I see Mary Ann. Is there anyone else? Okay, so we have one person from Zoom and about 12 in-house. All right, so I'll start with Zoom. Mary Ann, I will allow you to speak. You just need to unmute yourself, your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Councilor. My name is Mary Ann Vici. I live at 10 Kent Street here in Newburyport, and I'm wanting to talk to you about the resolution to change the state flag and seal. I consider this to be a racist symbol that we have in the Commonwealth, and we're hoping that the state will change this eventually, and that Newbury, the city of Newburyport, is suggesting to the state that they support this idea. This is simply another small step in our restitution towards Native American people who have experienced genocide, kidnapping, abuse, colonization, and marginalization for centuries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vici. All right, so bringing it back into city council, we have Linda Lou Barciaga. So name, address, and you have two minutes.
Miss, good evening, city council members. I am Linda Lou Barciaga, Ward 6, 18 Hoyt Lane. Council Shan will be presenting the formal language of the resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. When I heard this out loud, or when I reread the resolution, I am sad and angry, yet hopeful. As a member of the First Religious Society Unitarian Universalists, a group of congregants and friends commenced the Indigenous Peoples' Day Committee a couple of years ago. We brought to this very body a resolution to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, which passed with much appreciation from the many people who worked so hard for this effort. I come to you this evening to ask that you continue the work towards justice for Indigenous people by voting in favor of the resolution when it comes up for a vote, I believe on March 13th. This resolution has been stuck in legislative committee for 38 years in a row before an approval of a special commission in 2021. If you do not have the description of the offensive flag and seal, I think that Ms. Shan has one that she can give to you. But I'm going to do just one quote. "The illustrator of the flag and seal patterned the belt after the red flannel belt of Matacomet, housed in the Peabody Museum in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Matacomet was a leader in the Native War of Resistance Against English Colonization. His severed head was impaled on a pike and displayed in Plymouth for more than 20 years as a war trophy," unquote. Even worse than the 38 years of waiting for the appointment of the special commission is the fact that our Indigenous friends and neighbors have been asking for this change for over 50 years.
Thank you.
I present to you a petition with signatures from Newburyport citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Barciaga.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is John Budzina.
John Budzina from 11 Cushing Ave. I'm here representing Acting Out Productions on behalf of me and my wife. Acting Out Productions is now in our 18th year providing affordable, high-quality performing arts experiences for Newburyport and surrounding towns. We have served thousands of youth in this area throughout the years. We lost our space during the pandemic, and we are still seeking affordable space to provide workshops, rehearsals, and small performances for our community. Prior to the pandemic, we used the Brown Auditorium in the past for a performance which made the performance affordable and accessible to our youth. We are a founding member of the Newburyport Arts Collective, where we share this common challenge of access to free or affordable space for rehearsals and small productions. We believe performing arts are a critical part of a child's development, and the arts need spaces to create. So please make the Brown School Auditorium available to arts organizations that desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Kelly.
Good evening, Council. Ryan Kelly, 24 School Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Newburyport Cultural Council, echoing a lot of what John just said. We at the council are in full support of any creative community use of that space and are here to help in any way in planning and execution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Jones.
Councilors, my name is James Jones, and I live at 2 Wheels Lane. I am here in support of saving Brown School Gymnasium. I have been involved with Newburyport Pickleball since 2017. For three years, we were able to provide an indoor winter program at the Brown School Gymnasium for Newburyport residents and players from around other towns. We would have played there in 2020 and 2021 had it not been for COVID and the closing of Brown. Currently, there are over 280 of our residents in Newburyport Pickleball's active player database. While Newburyport Times Club offers an indoor winter pickleball program, and Choice Fitness in Salisbury has a basketball gym lined for a few courts, these two venues are unable to accommodate the increasing demand for indoor facilities. Saving the Brown Gymnasium would help to address this demand. Most of you know me as a strong advocate for pickleball, but as a resident, I also know that saving the gymnasium would benefit other recreational and community activities for all ages. Brown's Gymnasium is an asset to our city. Saving it is in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Jane Snow, 9 Carvin Street. I'm speaking about Order 428 with the Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm asking that we consider receiving and filing that item, because we've put the cart before the horse. The council has a lot of decisions to make about priorities. We have a lot of big projects that are coming up, and we need to know what we're doing before we put this RFI out to investors or developers, whatever you want to call them. And without knowing how you want to use that gym, do you want to keep it? Do you want to sell the building? Are you going to donate it? Whatever. I don't think it's a wise thing to put that out until you know those answers. I found the ad hoc group did not meet the requirements of what they were supposed to do. They didn't meet with the neighborhood stakeholders. They haven't had an open house for the public. They've had four meetings, and only two of them were the public allowed to speak at and give any input. And then I found that most of the neighbors didn't even know that they could come. So again, I'm asking you to strongly consider putting it on a receive and file, doing the hard work of finding out what the council priorities are, what the city can afford, and then go back and look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen Smith.
Yeah, good evening. Owen Smith, 175 St. Avenue. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to speak on Communication 462, which is about drinking water quality. I'd just like to say I welcome the input from this resident. It's an important conversation to have. You know, the Water Department does work to comply with the numerous federal and state regulations we have to comply with. However, there are root causes to everything. It is a complicated question. I do believe undesired outcomes are preventable. We need to plan for resiliency by analyzing, planning, and implementing good policy. It's a topic I enjoy learning about and talking about, and I'm sure a lot of you have watched the news cycle lately. Some news going in the Midwest, you'll see that society is becoming more risk adverse. So the same would apply to our public drinking water as well. So this would involve working with the new administration coming in and hope that we can take a progressive engineering policies to improve and make our drinking water more resilient. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Leonard.
Good evening, Mike Leonard, 13 Ting Street, commenting on Communication 463, and you can send agenda on the NYS facility funding presentation. There's good information in the presentation, rolling off of existing project debt service is good, wasn't in previous ones, it's in that, and that's good information. Just one point I would make, though, is to ensure that all CIP projects that are intended to be funded with general fund, ordinary debt issuances are included in the presentation. I didn't try to compare all the projects in the CIP to the packet slide presentation, but I saw that some are not there. For example, Police Dispatch Center renovation, Brown School Gym, Parks Field Office, these are all projects intended per the CIP to be funded with general fund, ordinary debt issuances, and they're not in the packet presentation. It's possible there have been some changes in funding assumptions since the origination of the CIP, which I know is about a year old. Maybe some projects are now intended to be funded with free cash, and others have been deprioritized. But it is important to clarify the completeness of that presentation when you're evaluating affordability of any one project among the several that compete for limited revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next one, you live at 2 Fairview Ave. Yes.
That's where I live.
Okay.
I recognize my address. That's wonderful. Okay, thank you. Anna Smolowicz, obviously an actress. Forty-four years ago, Mayor Sullivan, I went in and I said I wanted to start a theater in this town, and he said, "Well, go upstairs, see if that works." And I rehearsed there for the next 10 years, and he said, "So where's the theater?" And I said, "Unfortunately, we have no place to rehearse, so we're outdoors." And Maudslay State Park gave us a place, and today that is called Theater in the Open, and that's my first theater here in Newburyport, and I'm proud of it, and my students run it, and so it's wonderful. The Firehouse came, Theater in Newburyport, we've done so much. We are still the wandering Jewish theater. We have nowhere to rehearse. Tonight, I'm rehearsing at one of my students' houses, you know, 44 years later, to do my Holocaust play, which will be appearing at Penn Tucket High School in a couple of weeks. We do the shows, we bring culture to the community, these beautiful, precious places called the Firehouse Theater in the Open. We need support. We've needed it for a long time, and I'm asking tonight for you to consider us at the Brown School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Wilkinson. I live at 1 Avon Street. I'm here to represent the Actors Studio and many of the other theater groups. I am the newly executive director, only of two months, but I'm no stranger to the arts. I've been working in Newburyport for the last 32 years. I was working at the Firehouse Center for the Arts, and I've worked with almost, I think, every group in Newburyport that has a theatrical company. So I can say this, the biggest problem that we have is finding money to have our shows, and the second biggest problem is to find a space to rehearse for those shows. We rehearse at the Firehouse Center, we rehearse at churches. There are so many of us, we're all fighting for a place to rehearse. Anna said it the best. The other night, I had a meeting in someone's loft. There's no place to have rehearsals space for us. We would love to see the Brown School support us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Fontaine Dubois. I think.
Hi, I'm Fontaine Dubus. I've been teaching dance in this area since 1982.
Address place.
Oh, 50 Water Street.
Thank you.
I'm the director and owner of The Dance Place and co-founded Exit Dance Theater in 1987, and I'm also co-director of Joppa Dance Company, which was founded in 1983, all based in Newburyport. So I'm, yes, I'm dittoing these people. We need a place to rehearse mostly. It's hard to fight over the spaces. My studio I offer, but we have classes, so it's really, it's hard to, it's a conflict schedule-wise with that. So that's all I wanted to say. Also a member of Newburyport Arts Collective, and that's 35 companies strong, and we're now going to be starting to invite single artists. Right now, it's just companies, but that's how many we have already, is 35, music, theater, dance, and museums and everything, so please support us.
Thank you. So the next one is Linda, and I think your last name starts with a Z, and you live at 21 Federal Street? Linda, Linda, your turn.
I don't know if I can speak English. I'll tell you what to say.
I want a motion to return. I promise you.
My name is Linda Zier, and I live at 21 Federal Street in Newburyport. I've been working with Anna Smolowicz for the past 30 years, and it has always been a challenge to find places to rehearse. We have put on some of the biggest, balasiest musicals that you can think of, and right now, our concentration seems to have settled in on bringing the Tarzan Holocaust play to schools, middle school and high school-aged children. It seems that as we've gotten older, our energy has waned a bit, and putting on those big musicals, as much fun as they were, we realize that our efforts right now need to be towards this cause. And Anna is going tonight to rehearse at somebody's home, and we find basements and garages and carriage house lofts, and sometimes they're not that well-heated. And fortunately, we've had a mild winter, but that might change. But it's just so, it is just the heartbeat of a community to have the arts alive and supported and endowed, you know, in whatever way the council sees fit. And for the Brown School to become a rehearsal space for all these various groups would be such a benefit to the community, because many of the rehearsals are open to the public. And that is a way that a lot of people get to see shows and get introduced, walking by, seeing that today, rehearsal for Joppa Dance, young dancers, young actors, you know, very young children having their first experience in theater. And to be able to walk in and take a seat and just observe is a very big benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Heidi Newfill.
Hello, Council. Hello, everyone. I'm Heidi Newfill. I live at 10 Orange Street. I'm just here basically to say that I think, when I think of the Brown School, I think of it as a collective, historic building, and many of us who have children who have gone to those schools, or maybe even some of you have gone to that school, it seems like we need to preserve these spaces and honor them for the history that they have and the things that can be made in that space, whether it be somebody has use of it for a physical activity, somebody can be doing something with art or theater or whatever, but just to hold on to this piece, because we're losing too much of this. There's plenty of developers making luxurious condos everywhere. We put lots of money and effort into retail spaces that are so unaffordable that, you know, you have chain stores. Is there anything that's sacred? Can't we hold on to this? This is all part of our community. We've all been part of these places, and we need to hold on to them. I mean, we have historic communities, but this is something that's, it's nostalgic, and it's ephemeral, and it needs to be protected, and it needs to be utilized so that the next generation can have those experiences, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment. Thank you all. All right, moving right along, we have the mayor's comment.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just want to thank all of my cultural folks for coming out tonight. It's nice to see everybody, first of all. I had a great conversation with Anna earlier this week. I went to school with Anna's son, Aaron, so I've known her for a long time. We had a great conversation about how great Newburyport was, going through that huge transition downtown during urban renewal, but just how this became kind of a center for the arts community here. So it would be great if we could, you know, dedicate some resources to that, and I think using the Brown School for this purpose, Brown School Gym would be a great way to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. That's just how we rehearse.
I was hoping I'd come up here and announce our first snow day of the year for the schools, but we haven't quite made the call yet, but we are trending in that direction, so just everyone who's watching at home, it looks like we're going that way. So just a few things. DPS Director Search, I just want to give you a quick little update. So the Collins Center of UMass Boston is still working with us on our next DPS Director Search. We have decided to repost this position, so that was reposted on Friday. We did make an offer to a candidate last week, but they decided to stay in their current role. As I've already announced, City Engineer John Eric White will be filling the role of Acting Director moving forward. Jen Sullivan is already Acting Deputy Director, and Ron Keefe is Operations Specialist. We've already been working closely with this group, and this is a group that has worked closely with us all year around DPS issues, particularly this parks reorganization that you're voting on tonight. So I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Acting Director Jamie Tuculo, who's moving on to Salisbury, but we wish him all the best in his next role. Year two of the Streets and Sidewalks Plan is in your packet tonight. We had our hugely successful year one with 23 streets paved over four miles in Wards 1, 3, and 5. Year two will focus on Wards 2, 4, and 6. We will pave over just three and a half miles worth of streets, so a little less this year, but you'll notice we've got some really great, high-traffic streets on that list this year that are in desperate need of some work. And we've also, we might be not paving quite as much lengthwise as we did last year, but we're actually redesigning some streets and adding some really vital sidewalks to these streets as well, so it will definitely be money well spent. And by doing this plan, you know, I'll just emphasize again that we are able to plan ahead and work with engineering and really take a hard look at these streets on a year-to-year basis and plan ahead to make any kind of redesigns that we have to make and make them safer and mitigate any traffic in the area. So that is in your packet tonight. We also added another year, because this will be a rolling plan, so now we've added year six to that plan as well. Plum Island Dredge, I wish I had some great news for that. We're still in a stalling pattern. I did reach out to the Army Corps today. Didn't get an update, but they were hoping that they'd have some information to me on Wednesday. We do have an MRBA meeting on Friday that hopefully will have some more information to share with residents. You know, as you know, HNL Contracting has essentially packed up the Oyster Bay dredge. They're working with the Army Corps to get an extension, and once that extension is secure, subcontract another dredge to come in that can apparently navigate our very rough Merrimack River to get the stretch back up and running. The Newburyport Parks Reorganization Plan is in your packet tonight. That was sent out to Community Services last week on a two-to-one vote. We're obviously very excited about this plan, and we hope we have your support tonight to move this forward. That's going to improve operations and make our parks better. Schools, School Committee has not met since your last meeting, so I don't have any updates right now for schools. We have a meeting tomorrow night. If the buildings are closed tomorrow, most likely that meeting will get canceled, and we'll have an extra-long meeting next Monday for the School Committee. But big things coming in that, there's a presentation around school choice, so if you're interested in that, you might want to tune in either tomorrow night or next Monday. And also, the budget hearings will begin for schools as well. I just wanted to recognize Sergeant Whitney and Sergeant Gavin in the Newport Police Department real quick. They put the department through an assessment needed for their accreditation earlier this week. Standards for accreditation impact officer and public safety, address high liability and risk management issues, and promote general operational efficiency throughout the agency. So the department went through this, and it looks like everything went great, and they should be awarded their accreditation and a banquet in June. Another great thing that's happening in the city right now, we have about eight department heads taking place in a diversity, equity, and inclusion training that's being put on by Vision's DEI Essentials. This has been a two-hour-a-night for these past four Tuesdays, so the last one is tomorrow night. So we're excited about that, but it's really been a great session. We've kind of been split up into two different groups, so four department heads in one session and then four of us in another session. But we'll be happy to come back and share some of our experiences on that, and we're going to get more department heads involved in the next session. Meva had a tour tomorrow, so Meva has the MVR TA. They're going by Meva now, which is great. They're launching a couple new bus routes for Newburyport. We did have a demonstration tour that was scheduled for tomorrow, but we've decided to postpone that till next Monday. So that's going to be something that we're going to be doing with Salisbury and Ainsbury. We're going to start in Ainsbury, we're going to take the routes. Again, Meva's been very great to work with, Noah Berger and his team, looking at Newburyport and how we can best take advantage of, you know, public transportation here in Newburyport. So we're looking forward to kind of spreading that word and looking, seeing how these new routes fit the needs of Newburyport, and they're very open and willing to take feedback and continue to work with us on making these the best possible routes for Newburyport. continue to work with us on making these the best possible routes for Newburyport. In your packet tonight, you have something about building permit fees. So a late file to your packet is a request to amend the Code of Ordinances to allow for a delay in collecting building permit fees in cases in which the City Council grants a waiver. I'm not going to go too in deep with it right now, but we can talk with that when it comes to, Andy Port will be here too to answer any questions, but you have. But this is going to help us keep our safe harbor status for the full allotted time into next year. So very important that we get that vote in tonight. And finally, I just wanted to thank you all for moving forward the $2,000 from the Kelly School funds to continue design for 59 Low Street. We are just finishing up the RFP, and that should be getting out this week, and we can keep that project moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions? Counsel Lane.
Mayor, I'm just noticing in fiscal year '26, we have Phillips, Drew, Ryan, Sullivan. Those are all going to be done next year with that bond, right?
What's it on? I don't have it right in front of me.
Yeah, it just says fiscal year '26. So I'm thinking that there's some streets that I'd like to touch base with, because these will all be done.
Right. I'll take a look at it, yeah, I don't know if, I'll tell my head.
And also, a second question if I can. With the dredge, I know that they haven't been working consistently because of conditions. It's starting to feel a little bit like the high-street paving job, where we paid a lot of money and we didn't get a lot of service. Is that something that the administration's keeping their eye on in terms of what they're doing?
Obviously, the only difference is we haven't paid for this one, this is a federal project, so it's the Army Corps we're trying to keep the pressure on to get some answers.
Somebody's going to pay for it, but I just feel like there's a little bit more effort needed by the dredge company.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I've seen days where they're not working and there's not a single stitch.
They haven't done a thing since November, so yes, like literally not a thing since November. They started up for one day for maybe an hour, right, Mark? Maybe an hour, not even an hour?
Two hours.
Maybe two hours, and then it cocked out. So, yeah, they did the Night Foot Channel, and they haven't done a thing since then. So, yeah, it's been a very frustrating company to work with.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, no further questions, thank you, Mayor. All right. Clerk Jones, do we want to go into the consent agenda?
I'd be happy to, President. The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for February 13th meeting. We have communications, we have two applications, one for 5K Road Race on 416, 716, and 10-1 to go to license and permits. Application for second-hand motor vehicle, Newburyport Sunoco, that's to go to license and permits. Have communication 461, Brown School Gymnasium considerations to go to General Government and Committee of the Whole. Communication 462, a letter from Kathleen O'Connor Eyes regarding drinking water concerns to go to PW&amp;S. Communication 463, NYS Facility Funding Discussion to go to BNF and Committee of the Whole. Communication 464, Brown School RFI, Counselor Zee, a redline copy to go to General Government, Committee of the Whole. No transfers following one appointment, which is John Eric White as a temporary DPS Director, that's to go to PW&amp;S. Following items are coming out of the respective committees, Budget Finance. Appointment 372, Orders 388, Communication 443, 458. Community Services, Order 419, Communication 460, Order 417. Planning and Development, Appointment 378. Public Works and Safety, Appointment 368, 381, Orders 413 and 421. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
On approving the consent agenda, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second. Roll call.
On receiving and filing, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
No transfers, second reading appointments.
Second reading appointments, Appointment 377, Becky McKnight, 13 Friel Street, pre-commissioned until 3/1/2026. Three more reappointments. Appointment 379, Lorraine Ward, 7 Sullivan Drive, Human Rights Commission, 3/1/2025. Kristen Pharo, 28 Spofford Street, Commission on Disabilities, 3/1/2026. And Suzanne Gallagher, 3 Garnet Street, to the Board of Registarians until 3/1/2026.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Collectively?
Second.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I was hoping we'd get the resumes in the packet based on my, I guess, talking about it last week, but I do think residents need to know about anyone who we're appointing to boards and commissions, so I would encourage, I thought the administration would be able to put those in, but I didn't see them in here. So just, again, flag that maybe it could be posted under our meeting as some type of, I don't know, added or something. But I do really want to emphasize that that's going to be critical.
If I might. To your point, maybe we collectively apologize, I will get the resumes and we'll put them on the posting. And going forward, you will have the resumes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. So the motion on the floor is to approve on first reading?
Second reading.
Second reading, excuse me.
Collectively.
Roll call.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Orders.
First would be the resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts.
Motion to refer to General Government?
Second.
Roll call.
President, sure.
Yep, thank you. Just want to explain my vote, I'm going to vote in opposition. I've been consistent on these, I just think the council needs to, we've got enough stuff to do here in the City of Newburyport, much of which we would like to make some headway on, and so I just think this isn't the right expenditure of time. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
So roll call on moving Order 423, the resolution to...
General Government.
General Government, thank you. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Order 424.
Order 424 is the emergency preamble to the election calendar for 2023. The election calendar follows the both Order 424, one's 424 EP for election, emergency preamble. It essentially is what we do every year, I'm paraphrasing, but we would have a preliminary election September 19th, we would have the final election November 7th, we would have, importantly, the first day of poll nomination papers, March 1st. And most of all these dates are statutorily demanded, if you will. And it has been approved by the Elections Division of the Secretary of State.
Motion to waive the rules collectively, accept the emergency preamble, and approve Order 424.
Second.
Thank you.
Counselor Khan?
Oh, are we talking about it yet? Wait, okay, good. Thank you, Counsel President. Just a question, the 5 o'clock times on days when City Hall closes at 4:00, do you just keep them open, like keep it open longer?
We do, we do. I tried to negotiate that with the Secretary of State, they said, stay open.
Okay, and then the other question, the Saturday times, same thing, you will be open?
You know, that's because it used to be 20 days from the date of the election that one could register the vote. The recent Act, Voting Act of last year, reduced that to 10 days. The legislature did not ask any clerks, they would have said that's a Saturday, so it's a Saturday by statute.
So the City Hall, like it says last day and hour to register voters, so there's no registration done here, so it's not a problem? So anything that's Saturday?
It's a problem. It will have to be open.
You will have to be open, okay, and that's...
There's some workaround sometimes, when we have unusual dates and times, we'll have people leave nomination papers, if you will, knowing that there wouldn't be many at the police station. But for registration of voters, I think we'll have to be here.
Okay.
But we have a Board of Registars, and they help out quite a bit.
Excellent, great, well, thank you, Clerk Jones.
Further questions? All right, roll call.
Approving both the emergency preamble and the order waiving the rules. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, Order 425.
You have the Exchange Club Gift Acceptance of Order 425.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance?
And I'd tag on 426 and 427 collectively.
Second.
Exchange, pardon me, Police Cruiser Equipment Lease in New York, New York. Newburyport Youth Soccer Association of New York, presumably.
So moving 425, 426, and 427.
Budget and Finance. To? Budget and Finance.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on moving those three to Budget and Finance. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Order 428.
Order 428 is the request for expressions of interest, so-called RFI, for the former Brown School property.
Motion to refer to General Government?
Second. And Committee of the Whole?
Sure.
Committee of the Whole.
Sure.
Counselor Zee?
Yeah, I think I'm going to oppose this one, and the reason is that, you know, I'm really hoping for a bit of a reset coming out of the ad hoc, and I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. Consistent with my position in the ad hoc, I do think there are some questions we should seek to answer first, and giving assent to an RFI without having the RFI yet and trying to iron out those details. It just would be nice to do things in order and not have this looming over us while we have that conversation. So that's my reasoning why, and I do hope that we can have a bit of that reconversation going forward in General Government.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I will be supporting it. I actually was not able to attend, but I did watch a lot of the meetings that were posted, and it was helpful to see the process. And I think this is kind of a, I will say the facilitation of it too, was excellent to see in terms of efforts where we could get someone to kind of look objectively and help a dialogue happen and get some direction. So I will be supporting this, thank you.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Just for a little bit of clarity for the public, what is happening is that there is, certainly will be a request to put out an RFI, but in the meantime, what we have before us is an outline that has pulled together the information that we addressed in the ad hoc committee. That is simply an outline that will lead to the development of an RFI. And until that RFI has been put together and established now through, hopefully through the General Government Committee, really, nothing is going to go out until the City Council approves it. So there's been some confusion that's been expressed, I think, by the public, thinking that in the ad hoc committee, we were developing the RFI. We were simply developing an outline that would put together an RFI. And so that's where we're at, I think, I fully support this. I think it's helped to move it along, and hopefully it won't be another eight years.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Further discussion? Counselor Lane?
I'm going to oppose this as well. I spoke quite at length the last meeting we had on the ad hoc. We don't even have an appraisal on this property. This is exactly what I said was going to happen months ago, when I said the story's already written, you could see it, it was basically scripted, 1 through 12, what the process was going to be. I don't think the conversation really explored all of what we could do, and not having the appraisal is point-blank telling me that we are already set on our ways. So without an appraisal, without a value, we're putting the cart before the horse, just like Jane mentioned. I happen to agree with her, and that's why I'm going to be in opposition to this tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Lane.
I just have a quick point, can I have the motion again? Is it Committee, General Government, and Committee of the Whole?
General Government and Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, roll call.
Roll call on moving Order 428. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
No.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
On a vote of nine to two, motion passes.[1579.04]
All right. Moving right along. Order 429.
Order 429 is coming in as amended City Council rules, essentially adding one further rule with respect to the City Council group email and use thereof.
Motion to refer to-
General Government?
Yeah, General Government. There's no rules anymore.
And I would make it Committee of the Hall as well.
General Government and Committee of the Hall.
Please.
I'll second that.
Second by-
Counselor Zee?
Can I just make one request? Is there a clean copy with just the red line? These are not all this iteration, right, in the packet? There's a lot of strikes and things, but I think those were, have already been approved. So it'd be great to get just what this order is, because it was confusing when I read it.
You know, I almost frankly did it that way.
Okay.
It's just adding the last rule, which is 28, is it?
Yes.
Everything else is already enacted. So I certainly can do that.
That'd be great.
Yes, I would be. I mean, it would be. Right, you'll see on the last page, Rule 28.
Yeah, thank you. I just got confused, because I keep reading the, anyways, just reading it to make sure I'm caught up on what, whatever.
You want me to read the new ruling?
Sure.
So it's very brief. It's Rule 28, called Council Group Email. "There shall be a group email with an address of citycouncil@cityofnewreport.com. The intended use is for the public to contact all councilors without the use of individual emails. It is not to be used for deliberation as defined in GL 30A at all." Submitted, Counselor Shan. That's it.
All right, so Counsel Zee was the moving person who was the second?
Preston, I think, was second.
I was.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Order 430.
So Order 430 is the emergency preamble that goes together with Order 430, which essentially adds a sentence to the Building Code, Chapter 5 of our Code of Ordinances, that gives the City Council the ability to, to, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not waiver, but-
Suspense?
Suspense.
Delay?
Delay, defer?
Defer.
Any building codes for good cause shown.
Motion to waive the rules, so that we can waive the second reading, collectively also to accept the emergency preamble, and then to approve Order 430.
That's how it's-
Together.
Wow.
With that-
The ordinance needs to come first?
Oh, 138.
I think you're right.
No, it's not 138.
We'll make a note of that. So-
142.
So the emergency-
Ordnance 142, if we could take that out of order?
Yes, please.
I mean, I think that should go first, which-
Actually, the emergency doesn't reference Ordnance 142.
Well, 142 has an emergency attached to it.
Yeah.
Oh, it has its own. So I'll withdraw my motion on that, and I'll make a new motion to waive the rules, to waive the second reading, take it up on the first night, and then to approve Ordnance 142, which contains, I guess, an emergency within it.
It does. Emergency preambles can be done within the ordinance or in addition there, too, but KP Law put it in it.
I'll second all of that.
Which is, okay. You know, again, I think the pertinent language is, "Provided however the City Council may, for good cause shown, defer the payment of said fees until any required inspection shall be performed pursuant to 780 CMR." 780 CMR is generally the Building Code, the state Building Code. We did run this by KP Law. They were comfortable with "for good cause shown." And again, it's not a waiver of the fees, it's a deferment of the fees, which must be paid before there is the first inspection, as I understand it.
Counsel Zee, you had your hands up first, and then Counsel Vogel.
Question, maybe, for Mr. Earls. Can you tell, what is the first inspection? What is the typical first inspection that comes, and how far into the project are you at that point, one is?
Not to make this more confusing, but the applicant will probably ask for a foundation permit and do that as a whole. They'll pay for that as a whole and do the foundation. Then, the next permit that they're going to pull, which hopefully will be before Friday, will be for the framing, for the body of the work. The first inspection then will be actually a framing inspection. That's when the structure actually goes up. So no inspection will be done at that time. So they can frame, but no inspection will be done until they pay in full.
Got it. Thank you. I'll yield for now.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Council President. I was just hoping that we could get a little bit more clarity. We can read it, but for the public, I'd like to know, yeah, who's involved-
Director Port should be the one to speak to this, please.
Sure. I'm not a fan myself of extra process, but the steps that have been outlined here have been put together for a reason. The, long story short, is that Minko has wanted to roll from Three Boston Way into their project at the Haley's site, or what's referred to as 166 Route 1, as the site. They've done, as I think you know, that that'll be their third 40-hour project in the district. We have benefited from that district, both from the creation of 25% of the units in the projects they've done in their district, as being affordable housing units. This is according to the state's guidelines for what is an affordable unit. We also have benefited, though, because those are all rental units, the way that the state subsidized housing inventory underneath Chapter 40B, which is the Conference of Permit Statute. The way that they look at those units is, if they are, the project that Minko's has done here are rental projects, and 25% of those units are affordable, which we made a mandate in the district above the 20% the state had in the first place, we get credit on the subsidized housing inventory for all of the units in those projects. It benefits us here, I think, to maintain what we have as essentially a safe harbor status, rather than having that lapse, let's say, you know, sometime in March, because we haven't actually issued a building permit for the same project that the planning board approved a year ago. So in order for us to maintain that qualification of the units in that Haley's project, they go online, onto our subsidized housing inventory when the planning board approves it, but they lapse a year later if the developer hasn't come in for a building permit. So in this instance, where the developer is looking to get the building permit, they've expedited getting plans in here, but there's a delay where they're trying to roll financing from their Three Boston Way, which hasn't completed yet. They are actually waiting for a transformer, for instance. They need to complete that project first before they can put shovels on the ground for the Haley's site. However, there's a benefit for the city here, I think, in postponing just the payment, not the actual amount, but just the date that it's actually due, because it would allow us to maintain that safe harbor status in relation to the credit for the units in the Haley's project. And I think it's, generally speaking, the city's best interest to be able to direct, you know, affordable housing projects or dense housing projects in general, where they belong. In this case, where we've been directing them is in the 40-hour district. We think about other places in the city where we want density, as opposed to, say, the historic areas of the city. This helps us to maintain that level of local control.
Counsel Cameron?
I have a question to Director Port. So just to paraphrase, try to dumb this down for me. If we didn't worry about the subsidized housing inventory, they don't need the building permit. They're doing us a favor by getting the building permit.
Yeah, that's a fair characterization. You know, they have been a good partner, I guess, in general speaking, for the 40-hour district, and they have been able to expedite getting the plans in. It's just the fee, because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, that they're not able to do right at this moment.
So for their benefit, they would-
They would hold off a few months longer.
They would hold off a little while, because they don't want to pay the $250,000 or whatever it comes to. But we want them to do it, because you said within a year from the issuance of the planning board.
From the planning board's approval, correct?
Yeah, approval, okay. All right, thank you.
I think your argument here is that there's a benefit of the city side of that equation, you know, therefore, without necessarily any downsides, it seems to benefit the city to do it, so.
I am also curious, when was the last time somebody built a fallout shelter? Anyone can tell me that.
It's the nature of your question.
So, further questions?
Just on the other hand.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor, President, is a motion to approve both the emergency preamble and the ordinance for 142, the pertinent language I had read into the record.
Correct. Roll call.
Just a point of order. That has the emergency preamble in it already.
It does.
Okay, just, it's not two separate things?
Two separate concepts within one document.
Thank you.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
On a vote of nine to two, motion passes.
All right. Moving right along. Order 429.
Order 429 is coming in as amended City Council rules, essentially adding one further rule with respect to the City Council group email and use thereof.
Motion to refer to-
General Government?
Yeah, General Government. There's no rules anymore.
And I would make it Committee of the Hall as well.
General Government and Committee of the Hall.
Please.
I'll second that.
Second by-
Counselor Zee?
Can I just make one request? Is there a clean copy with just the red line? These are not all this iteration, right, in the packet? There's a lot of strikes and things, but I think those were, have already been approved. So it'd be great to get just what this order is, because it was confusing when I read it.
You know, I almost frankly did it that way.
Okay.
It's just adding the last rule, which is 28, is it?
Yes.
Everything else is already enacted. So I certainly can do that.
That'd be great.
Yes, I would be. I mean, it would be. Right, you'll see on the last page, Rule 28.
Yeah, thank you. I just got confused, because I keep reading the, anyways, just reading it to make sure I'm caught up on what, whatever.
You want me to read the new ruling?
Sure.
So it's very brief. It's Rule 28, called Council Group Email. "There shall be a group email with an address of citycouncil@cityofnewreport.com. The intended use is for the public to contact all councilors without the use of individual emails. It is not to be used for deliberation as defined in GL 30A at all." Submitted, Counselor Shan. That's it.
All right, so Counsel Zee was the moving person who was the second?
Preston, I think, was second.
I was.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The motion is now amended to include that phrase, "And this deferment shall expire on June 1, 2024."
Discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call on the amendment. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The motion is now amended to include that phrase, "And this deferment shall expire on June 1, 2024."
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the approval as amended. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a point of order. For the public's worth, could we tell them what we just voted on? All we did was give them a number.
We voted on moving to Public Works and Safety the in-permit previously described, and parking fines, which is a schedule of parking fines, basically an increase to a number of parking fines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ordnance 139.
Ordnance 139 is an amendment to the municipal fee schedule that would essentially reduce the fee paid by a food truck to $350.
Motion to send to Community Services.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The motion is now amended to include that phrase, "And this deferment shall expire on June 1, 2024."
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the approval as amended. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The motion is now amended to include that phrase, "And this deferment shall expire on June 1, 2024."
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the approval as amended. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a point of order. For the public's worth, could we tell them what we just voted on? All we did was give them a number.
We voted on moving to Public Works and Safety the in-permit previously described, and parking fines, which is a schedule of parking fines, basically an increase to a number of parking fines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ordnance 139.
Ordnance 139 is an amendment to the municipal fee schedule that would essentially reduce the fee paid by a food truck to $350.
Motion to send to Community Services.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
So just make, please make sure the wording that is the deferment that is being solely for that, for this applicant.
That's what it says, the deferment is not, the deferment is non-transferable.
Right, not the amendment. Right. So just for my clarification, that was, that amendment was offered by you, seconded by you, you made the first, okay, so it's truly an amendment?
Second.
So we would vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call on the amendment. Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou? Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes, the motion is now amended to include that phrase and this deferment shall expire on June 1st, 2024.
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the approval as amended, councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Motions, all motions pass.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate that one.
It was fun.
All right, ordinances.
Yes, the ordinances.
I was gonna give you a second.
138 is an amendment to the municipal fee schedule. It's with respect to reinstituting the in-permit that allows ins a slightly reduced rate in the parking garage.
A motion to send to Public Works and Safety collectively with ordinance 140?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
On moving 138, 140 to PWNS. Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
No.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
And councillor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a point of order. For the public's worth, could we tell them what we just voted on? All we did was give them a number.
We voted on moving to Public Works and Safety, the in-permit previously described, and parking fines, which is a schedule of parking fines, basically an increase to a number of parking fines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ordinance 139.
Ordinance 139 is an amendment to the municipal fee schedule that would essentially reduce the fee paid by a food truck to $350.
Motion to send to Community Services.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
And councillor Shan?
Yes.
Point of order on an item, can I?
Councillor Khan?
Um, yes, for ordinance 140, maybe I'm wrong, but I just want to make sure we do eventually get a copy that shows the changes. I didn't see it in what's in our packet.
Yeah, if I could speak to that.
The one we moved, yes.
It's partly because the parking fines have been all over the place, and the section that they're put into, to the municipal fee schedule that you worked so hard on, like I'd say, didn't have it in it. That's why I didn't. But I can, I, I can give you a sheet that would show, for example, parking on a crosswalk going from $10 to $20.
That would be great.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And ordinance 141?
Ordinance 141 is a zoning amendment on short-term rental units.
Motion to refer to planning and development and committee of the whole?
Second.
Councillor Zede?
Thank you, just really brief comments on the way in here, so I did try and write a memo to give some, some background, but just a brief comment on my part, three minutes or less here, so I really want to, I'm excited to bring this forward, I know it's not the most exciting topic for many of these days, but I really do feel we, we really have an imperative, we need to, we need to do something, and I really, so that's my first point. My second one is, I did put a lot of, try and do a lot of, get a lot of process and input into this. I have a lot of tepid reactions, so I feel like I'm somewhat over the target at this point in terms of what it should look like, and I'm, I'm kind of excited to hear what, what this hive mind thinks, and then also getting into other process. Last couple things is just philosophically, and I explained this briefly in the memo, but just really trying to think about this as, you know, not one monolith with short-term rentals, but thinking about sort of business short-term rentals and not-business short-term rentals, which translates in some ways in the ordinance into owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, and really seeing that there are numerous paths for people to do short-term rentals in this ordinance, you know, whether they're owner-occupied, they still get a good number of days a year where they don't have to be there, covering snowbird-type situations, and then opportunity for some investor as well, peer investor in business in mixed-use districts. I really do think it's a compromise, and I'm very much looking forward to the opportunity to, to have a debate here, and with the planning board, and I will, I will look forward to working with the chair to figure out what the dates look like and when a joint hearing can be held, and since it is a zoning ordinance. So thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Zede. All right, roll call on sending 141 to P and D and committee of the whole.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, moving on to committee items. Councillor Vogel, did you want to mention anything on the Brown School?
Sure, I think that, I thought that after the last meeting I didn't exist any longer, but.
It'll be off in a minute.
As you know, well know, there are documents in the packet that include the roundup, if you will, of the effort that we made, and it's going to come right back, and we'll discuss it in general government.
Thank you.
Probably where we're going to start next week.
All right, as far as Market Landing Park, we did have a meeting before.
Can I have one more thing?
Yes, councillor Vogel.
You know what, I'm going to ask actually that the planning director, if he would be so kind, is to send out the word version of his RFI outline, and perhaps if those of us that have interest, in the same way that the councillor from Ward 1 had interest in redlining it, perhaps you could take your time, and then collectively we would have all that information in front of us. So that may be one way to help us through the meeting, if that, if that, if you could do that. That way everybody can take a look at it, do what they want with it, and then we have it in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry that I interrupted you.
All right, moving right along. Market Landing Park, we had met before this committee meeting, I mean, we met before the council meeting, we will be meeting again. The intent going forward, this particular ad hoc, is to try and wrap up the, what we have done so far, and write a structure for the follow-on ad hoc for Market Landing Park, which is going to entail mainly how we do financing and how we work with the waterfront trust documents. So more to come on that next committee meeting. So moving on to budget and finance, councillor Zede?
Motion to approve appointment 372, Ethan Manning, Finance.
Second.
City auditor, thank you. So committee met a week and a half ago or so, on February 16th, and Ethan joined us and spoke. Just to give you some highlights of the conversation, he has felt that things have been productive in the department, and that he has enjoyed working with the city, with this department, starting back in 2014. Spoke very highly of the team that's sort of been assembled there over the years, and expressed an interest and excitement to work with the new IT director, since there are some, some connections there as well. Then we had a little bit of conversation ranging from a couple different topics. Councillors asked about, does, does the department head feel supported in the role? Are there things the council can do? And generally speaking, Ethan stated, you know, happy to work with folks and, and work with everybody and kind of continue to work as things restructure. You may recall a couple of years ago, some splits between payroll and treasurer and some different aspects there. Then we had a little bit of a conversation on trying to help new councillors who are joining the city council get up to speed as quickly as possible on the budget, and Director Manning stated that he's, he's very interested in doing a finance-type orientation, just to help folks who may be joining the council get up to that speed as quickly as possible. Then, last couple ones were just a discussion on major projects or initiatives that maybe we, he sees going forward in the department. The biggest ones pointed to were upgrade in munis, which is the municipal finance system. That's my, that is, hopefully happened by now, when we talked, it was happening that day and the next day, moving into the cloud, and hoping to also take on continuously updating the financial policy of the cities, spending targets for CIP and all of those different things. And then, and then also on sort of that technology angle, we're trying to look at how to leverage munis for more transparency, and just sharing with, now that it's in the cloud, are there opportunities to share with residents more, with councillors more, financial data. And then finally, we just talked about schools, and the schools have been on their own munis for a long time, and they are also upgrading, so I think the long-term goal stated was to eventually bring them back together. And then we did slide into a little bit of conversation about how budgets are built, and the 2.5% versus maybe building on a budget of less than 2%. And Ethan kind of walked us through some different thoughts and philosophies on that, with I think the core theory being that, you know, with some of the promises we've made on collective bargaining agreements and so forth, that it's hard to envision building a budget on less than 2.5%. So that wasn't the heart of the conversation, but it did come up, so I share it with you. The committee does recommend the appointment for approval three to zero.
Further discussion? I actually have a question for you councillor Zede.
Sure.
One of the items I thought he had brought up was bringing in possibly a communication on the CIP projects and having a discussion that way.
Yes, so that is, what Ethan and I, we talked, and I suggested we put in that NYS funding facility slide deck in, and that's what we're going to use as the, as the platform to have that conversation, and I'll have a little bit more on that after I finish all the items here. But yes, that's the idea.
Thank you. Councillor Lane?
If I could just ask a question of the director of finance, in your opinion, how are we doing? How much have we spent in the last 10 years? And with the amount that we want to spend in the next three years, is there a certain temperature where you start to get a little bit, maybe we should slow it down a little bit?
It's a, it's a great question, and there's a lot of different ways of looking at, I think, at a very high level, our, the city's reserves are very strong at this point, which I think we're fortunate to have in place as we continue to look at this uncertain, uncertain economic path that the country, you know, could be on, remains to be determined. I mean, our, our local economy continues to be strong, we've been able to make continued investments into our infrastructure and capital assets as a city, which I think is a very strong signal in terms of looking at the city's overall financial condition. You know, kind of pressures that we continuously look at, you know, besides our unfunded liabilities, our pensions, our, our retiree health insurance, et cetera, that there's a lot of needs in the, in the capital improvement program that we've been discussing, even most recently as the last Budget and Finance Committee, where we discussed the affordability of the NYS facility amongst the other, the multitude of needs for an old historic city like Newburyport. But overall, I think we're, you know, positioned as strongly as we can be as a city, and I think it's really important that we continue to keep an eye on our, you know, financial policies and make sure that we're all kind of adhering to them as a, as a city as a whole, and kind of making sure that they're reflective of everything that we believe we should be, you know, working towards as a city government.
Just a follow-up? Just a follow-up, and I just, I strictly want your opinion, I think you do great work. If we had a major infrastructure problem that cost us about eight to 10 million, what would that do to the, to our financial health as a city with everything that we have planned?
Sure, that's a great question, I think, I think the city is definitely, we have some of our own capacity out there. In fact, if you look at our balance sheet, I would argue that there, there's a healthy capacity in terms of debt that we could take on if we had to, offset by, you know, those reserves to help, you know, fund the debt service initially until the city would be able to kind of, you know, come together and adjust its budget to, to meet for an unanticipated need like that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councillor Macaulay?
Thank you councillor president, I have a question for the finance director. First of all, I will be supporting the, the reappointment here, I think the city has been tracking in the right direction. Did have a question that popped up today. In the daily news, it noted that the Whittier School is going to build a new school for $433 million, and they expect to get some money from the state, but roughly, it's, it, they're going to be $260 million that they need from the 11 donor towns. Can you estimate what that percentage might be, given, you know, are we 10% of that, are we 30% of that, based upon our allocations through the year? We're one of them, so, thank you.
Sure, off the top of my head, I could not say that. However, in the budget document itself, there is a kind of exhibit that breaks out all the participating towns and the percentage allocation by each, so one might roughly be able to back into it based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councillor Zede?
I just want to add one tidbit, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection from the Whittier charter documents is that tuition is allocated by number of students, but capital is divided evenly beyond, by the communities. That's my recollection, so we'll have to double-check that. So I don't want to say it's as easy as dividing by 11, but it may be, and it probably does bear actually analyzing it so we can get the right number off the top of my head, but that's my recollection. We had a long conversation about that a year, two years ago.
Yes, good, good point councillor.
Yeah.
Further questions, discussion? All right, roll call.
To approve appointment 372, councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
Yes.
Thank you, councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
By a phone of 11 to 0, motion passes.
Next up would be a collective motion to receive and file Order 388 and Communication 443, NYS Facility Bond Order and 59 Low Street FAQs.
Second.
So again, the committee met same night, we, we did take these up in committee together, and, and we are doing that tonight too. So the substance, the primary substance of the conversation was around those slides that I mentioned earlier. We did get those posted, they're definitely under the finance page, and, and they should also be on the Budget and Finance post, but they're definitely under the Finance Department on the city website. And so Ethan did walk us through the slides, Director Manning, and essentially the slides walked through the famous, the now-famous slide of the bars going up towards that 2.5% of operating towards debt, and then that led into some additional conversation, some of which was a subject of questions tonight as well. So we just talked about, again, a refresh on what's general fund debt versus what does it mean to go outside of the levy? Should we be issuing debt? Should we have a consistent line item in the budget for these types of things? So I really do want to refer you to the recording, because it's, it's more than frankly I can summarize. Turning back to the NYS facility in particular, there was a good deal of conversation around potential funding sources, so we had been talking about this in the context of essentially a bond order for 100% of the funds, at least against the estimate, but there were several other ones. I think that one of greatest interest was the opioid allocation that the city of Newburyport is expecting to get, which is something around $1 million spread out over 17 years, front-loaded a little bit towards the early years. Much like ARPA in the early days, that money is still a bit unknown exact, I mean, there's some small amount of guidance out there as to what it can be spent for, but Finance Director does expect that to be expanded upon, of course, as, as the money gets closer in terms of what you can use it for. And that really is primarily being driven by the state, because they are essentially receiving the money, setting the rules, and then allocating to the municipality, so that, that's kind of that. Then we talked about, some of the other funding sources were local options, so to say, those are taxes that we can choose to adopt, and we focused primarily on short-term rentals and cannabis as two, I, I really, the only two, I think, is what we discovered in committee, local options that we, we don't have, that we could have. And then we had a little bit of conversation about potential disposition of property, sale of property, because that was also identified, and there were a couple of, of properties that were discussed. And that's kind of what led us into the broader conversation about debt and capital and all those things, so I'm going to again save that. And then 443 were some frequently asked questions. So on this order specifically, the recommendation or the request to receive and file, it came from the administration, the committee talked about that, and given that the $200,000 passed, and there's now a design that needs to be done, and recalculation of estimates and so forth, that we should just receive and file this at, at this time, and we can take up a new, whatever it is, bond order combined with maybe other funding sources or not when the time is right. And that's the collective recommendation, by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you councillor Zede. Councillor Khan?
Thank you councillor president, thank you chair, I, I thought that was a really good summary. I do want to, people could watch this meeting on February 16th, and I really actually encourage it because it was an excellent walkthrough of this communication that's now come into the packet to Budget and Finance, but I just kind of really want to emphasize a couple of things I came away with, and, you know, the, the local options, as the chair mentioned, you know, those two areas of cannabis as well as short-term rentals. I think to kind of put a point on it, with short-term rentals, even though we don't have zoning, we are getting room tax from the state, from what the, these short-term rental units are paying, we are getting money, and that's part of the revenue we've collected. And I thought it was really insightful to hear before the 2019, I guess, Act that the state did to collect room, short-term rental taxes, the, the, the room tax amount was, was it like $80,000 a year? And then as soon as short-term rentals kicked in, that amount is $300,000 is what it was. So even though we don't have short-term rental zoning, we are getting money from it, and there is a reason for the community impact aspect. The local option is the individual communities can add an additional tax, and so that's where, like I said, we're getting the state, but the additional municipalities could tax up to 3%, I believe, on top of that. So as we're trying to talk about relieving the burden from tax-paying residents, we really, I think this was a very powerful slide to see what are some considerations, what are some areas of relief that we could do here as a body? The other thing, and, and people won't like this, but the disposition of underutilized properties, I, I think I asked, well, what is that? What, you know, we have that line item, disposition of underutilized and/or vacant city properties. You know, we did mention Emma Andrews Library, you know, like in terms of underutilized, it is a property that's worth noting to see what service it has, and maybe how it could serve the city more broadly. And I know it's controversial, but I do want to call it out, that did come up in the conversation, and, and so those were the, the two areas that I, I thought was interesting to me. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Khan. Further discussion? All right, roll call.
Receiving and filing Order 388, Communication 443, councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Dunneou?
No.
No? Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor Macaulay?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
By vote of nine yes, two no, motion passes.
Last for this evening in terms of business is motion received and filed Communication 458, mid-year budget report. Midyear Budget Report.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so, Director Manning back in the spotlight again on this one. Um, this is our, our classic mid-year report, so we, um, we walk down the report and, and as we typically do, split it up into sort of revenue considerations and then expenses. Um, in terms of revenue, we're sort of right, almost, you know, on point with the 50%, depending on the department, but overall, sort of about halfway through a year, about halfway, half of the revenue having been collected. Um, there are, as every year, there are some, uh, seasonal things, like Harbor Master, which tends to have a high season and a low season, that can account for some of the, um, discrepancies that, that do come up. Um, in general, the, the Finance Director reports the city budget is, again, essentially in line with where it's supposed to be, as he often does or usually does. There are some lines that are a little bit higher, and the explanation was provided, I'm not going to read those, uh, they are available in the mid-year report itself. Um, in terms of the expense side, um, you know, water and sewer are, are down a little bit in terms of, of revenue, pardon me, um, but in general, expenses are also essentially where they're expected to be. There's nothing, I would say overly of note. The, the things we talked about a little bit that were a little bit of interest were, uh, meals are up 14%, meals tax, so, uh, I don't know, maybe a return to, to going out and things like that, or, and/or also being buttressed, I think, by inflation where prices are going up, so the taxes go with it because it's a percentage. Um, rooms tax, which the at-large Counselor, uh, mentioned, that does include, um, some short-term. One interesting thing about the short-term, because it's come up now a few times in committee, is that the Department of Revenue will, will not give us, um, short-term, they will not break out the short-term rental data out of privacy concerns. They don't want to allow somebody to attribute tax to a certain person. So, in some communities where only two people are doing short-term rentals, if you had the number, you could essentially back into their revenue fairly easily because it's just simple math. I'm not sure it's, that would be that clear in Newburyport, but that's the, the DLS, the DOR's position on it. So, it's been asked several times, I think, can we have more granular data on that? And the answer, at least at this time, is no. Um, building permits was definitely one that was a bit of an, an eye-opener. Um, year over year, they're down 48.5%, and that certainly looks like a very large percentage, um, but in, in large part, that is literally a single permit change, and that is 3 Boston Way, which was the subject of conversation. If you take out that, it's down still, but it's, it's 8.8% down, so it's a much more sensible kind of number. Other licensing permits are up 141%. That's largely because during COVID, the Licensing Commission was waiving fees, they have, they are no longer waiving fees, so we're still having weird anomalies from COVID essentially, where numbers look huge, but really, if you compared it to three years ago, it would either be moderately the same, up or down. And then last thing I just want to point out, because it will eventually come, um, our way, is that the Finance Director has provided for a list of likely transfers, and, um, that will come up, um, at some point, presumably before the fiscal year ends, or have already come up. So, uh, we've already done a fire overtime transfer, and we talked about that, that is included. The other one that I think people will be interested in is the snow and ice. Um, yes, we unfortunately have spent, you know, the snow and ice budget and do expect to, and this was even before we had tonight and last week, we do expect to, um, to overtake that budget as we often do, and we did, I did, um, ask a little bit about that, and in part, it's because of early-season purchases and, um, other commitments irrespective of how bad the winter ends up being, lease of equipment and purchase of salt, uh, essentially. So, that's done at the, you know, the beginning of the season to be ready, and if it ends up being a dot of a winter, so be it, although now I say that, and we're an hour away from a snow emergency parking ban. So, uh, that's the whole report. Um, at pound review, it's a 3-0, just to receive and file it, F for your information. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Z. Further questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Receiving and filing the mid-year budget report, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
So, no more business, just a couple of updates, um, to the President's question. Um, yes, we do definitely want to have this broader discussion, kind of, we call it like a pre-CIP conversation or CIP appetizer, you can pick a cool name for it, but we, in order to give us a vehicle, we put in Communication 463, which we refer to Budget and Finance tonight, and we do expect, because we have a somewhat lighter agenda on Thursday, I'd like to take it up, uh, then, and, and try and have just an hour-long conversation. There's no end, per se, there's no decision we're coming to, just to have, continue the conversation that I think was felt in committee was helpful. And the questions I'm hoping to kind of help the conversation discuss are, how much should you spend on capital as a percentage of your budget? How much of that should be debt? What's the impact on taxes and taxpayers? And then, bringing it down to which projects then can you prioritize? And these are just broad convers, discussion points, and that's where, that's what I'm hoping to use as like our sort of discussion area that, and again, to help us warm up for CIP, which will be coming. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, I did talk to Andy Port about CPC, so those are working their way through the, the community CPA, those are working their way through CPC. We would expect to have those come to us likely at the end of March, maybe the first meeting in April. Remember, we're on a new cycle now, so just be aware of those. It is a smaller raft than usual because of the debt allocations made, um, in the previous year. And so, so Thursday is our standing meeting, 6 o'clock, um, we'll take up the, the few items that we have, gift acceptances, et cetera, police cruisers, and that's it for Budget and Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Z. Uh, Community Services, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel President. Uh, first item we have, uh, tonight is, uh, a resolution, uh, for Pete Pollard, uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, um, I'd like to just read the, the, uh, resolution. Whereas, uh, Pete Pollard was born in Newburyport on July 29th, 1958, he was the son of the late Charles and Patricia Little Pollard, and was a graduate of Newburyport High School, class of 1977. Whereas, Pete was a lifelong resident of the city, who possessed great pride in his hometown and supported it in any way he could, and whereas, he was an athletic trainer for both Newburyport and Triton Schools, helping those in youth sports become better athletes, and was truly dedicated to letting them know he was cheering them on and not just fixing their injuries. And whereas, Pete has a Newburyport fixture on the corner of State Street and Pleasant Street for many years, he would greet all residents with a friendly welcome and a wave and a hearty call of heat, and would always acknowledge everyone who passed by with a smile and a simple hello. Whereas Pete exemplified what it is to make Newburyport's downtown a kind and welcoming place, and therefore, the City of Newburyport, through its city council, authorizes the placement of a plaque on or upon the corner of State Street and Pleasant Street, which shall state Pete's Corner, and be a reminder to all who pass by to be a little kinder and to make those fortunate enough to know Pete's smile. Uh, sponsored by Counselors Lane and Preston. Uh, this passed 3 to 0.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Comments or questions?
I'll just, real quick.
Counsel Lane.
Thank you for reading that. Um, Pete was special to me, obviously, and especially to Counsel Preston. Um, the plaque that they're talking about as well, we've spoken about with some of his classmates, so it'll be a private donation, a gift, and will come in as such, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lane. Roll call.
Most approved, the resolution on Peter Pollard. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane. I'm going to say yes and yeet the bun. So noted. Uh, Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
That's, um, 11 to 0, one yeet.
Counsel McCauley.
Seven. Uh, I'd like to, uh, Communication 460, like to motion to receive and file that.
Second.
Uh, these were a series of letters. Uh, these letters came from, uh, DPS, NYS, Port, Parks Alliance, Planning Office, Parks Commission, and the Parks Manager. They all spoke in support of the, uh, Parks Plan as was amended and submitted to, um, the council.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call, we're receiving and filing, uh, Communication 460. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z. And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve, uh, Order 417, the Parks Reorganization Plan.
Second.
Not to, uh, I'll give a synopsis of this, but not to belabor this, we've had a presentation on, uh, February 7th, we had a public hearing on February 15th, and we had a follow-up committee meeting on 2/21. Uh, what we saw here was a revised Parks Plan. Um, it addressed, uh, in some ways, both the operational and maintenance side, as well as more in-depth, the softer side of things, uh, how people would interact. Uh, we saw an expansion of adult recreation, we saw an expansion of the MyRec program, we saw an expansion of the administrative function, uh, within the DPS. We saw, uh, groups like the Parks Commission step up and assert their authority that we had delegated to them on setting the vision and direction of the parks, uh, both in short, medium, and long-term, uh, plans going forward. We saw the, um, uh, Port Park Alliance, um, step up, and because they're now separate, uh, they are now pushing for advocacy, they're pushing for volunteers, uh, and they have committed to open transparency, uh, going forward, all good things. Uh, what we did here, um, in the committee is we heard, uh, some folks, uh, we were split. Um, we heard some folks that said, we, we would like a Parks Director, um, for, uh, uh, because they will raise visibility and they will be the true champion of the parks. Uh, but the more we looked at the things along the way here, what we found is integrating the operations of the parks into the operations of the city that already works very well, uh, is probably a better way to do that. Uh, and, and it's now the time to do that. Uh, there were questions about how, going forward, we're going to measure this. Uh, we do need to, uh, understand the metrics of our work order system, and, uh, we need to do some quantitative analysis of how people are using the parks. We should have that information now where we didn't have it before. Um, success needs to loop in community, uh, feedback and public input along the way. We think, uh, based upon the proposals, that there are now avenues for that along the way because there are multiple people working it, the commission, administration, as well as the advocacy group on the side. Um, and as I had mentioned, the, uh, Parks Commission themselves, uh, has truly stepped up in creating a 10-year vision of short, medium, and long-term visions on that. It's up to us now to hold them accountable, um, to their, uh, to their goals and their objectives along the way. Uh, we do think, and we, out of committee, it was 2 to 1, uh, but we do think this is a more efficient use of materials, resources, to maintain the service levels that we have within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Discussion? Counselor Cameron.
Uh, thank you. Um, I am going to vote to support this, uh, plan, and sort of my baseline, um, as this whole process started, and, and I think with other, um, sort of more administrative structural choices that the council, uh, gets involved in, is really to defer to the administration. Um, I, I'm a keen believer that there are 11 counselors, not 11 mayors, and there's one mayor. Um, and regardless of how I might feel about an individual mayor, um, whether I, I love the job that the mayor's doing, or I have questions about the job that mayor's doing, um, my, my baseline is going to defer to the administration because they are the ones, uh, that are going to have to run these, um, and be held ultimately accountable. And, you know, I say that, um, again, whether I, I, I support, um, or, or don't support a mayor, and I will say I support this mayor, uh, and what he's doing. I supported Mayor Holliday, uh, with whom I, uh, served on the council, um, and while she was mayor, and I go back as far as, uh, Mayor Moke, which maybe Counsel Vogel did as well. Um, you know, the administration, and we see a lot of folks every, every time we meet, um, in, in committee meetings, um, I do have confidence in the people that we've had, uh, running, uh, running the city administratively, and, and therefore, uh, that's, that's, that's my natural inclination. Um, I do think this would be better served with a point person, uh, whether they're the director or whatever the title is, somebody that stitches all of this together. Um, a lot of good work has gone into this, and there is a lot of integration and connections. Uh, and I do think, uh, being a DPS, you know, in that umbrella, um, there's, there's a lot of good to that, and I do, uh, I find that the, the youth services and the adult recreation, I think that's good, and that's been talked about for a long time. Uh, the involvement of, uh, you know, the, um, mayor's, um, you know, point person on special projects is important. Um, whether this is sustainable or not, uh, again, I think we should have a discussion around the budget process, and during budget process about a director. Um, I, I know one of the, um, highlights of this was supposed to be cost efficiencies. I, I think, you know, that would be money well-spent to have somebody where, that connects all of this together. Um, but if this ultimately is not sustainable, this to me is not, uh, like a zoning ordinance that is very hard to change, it's not like we're building a $276 million school and we can't change. We can change structure, the administration can change it, and I think that's sort of where the, the feedback loop is. If this isn't working, um, I think there's enough mechanisms built in here, as, as the word five Counselor mentioned, where we would know if the job's not getting done. So, um, I, you know, I, I think it's been, uh, certainly a long process, and, uh, maybe we've all learned a few things from it, I don't, I don't know what those are, but, uh, at this point, I'm, I'm certainly willing to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Counselor Khan.
Great, thank you, Council President. Um, yes, I will also be supporting this, and I definitely think the, the revision, but also seeing a lot of the feedback and information that was talked about last year, kind of being, um, moving forward ahead and considered and talked about, and I think there have been some, uh, some major kind of steps made, especially with the formation of the, the kind of, um, Port Parks Alliance Group, did I get that right? There's a lot of Ps there. Um, but, you know, already, I, I do think that kind of control of the volunteer, or, you know, the volunteer arm for parks, as well as the fundraising arm, it's nice to see, uh, a body like that engaged, and, and seeing already so many things that they're starting to do, getting a lot of visibility. So, I'm very, very excited about that effort. But, um, my concerns were really, um, like, I mentioned before, I really did always feel like the operations could have been streamlined with DPS, so this was something that I, I saw a need for, but those other aspects in terms of the multiple kind of organizations that were involved, uh, I, I kind of agree with the Counselor-at-Large that said, you know, this is the administration's, uh, effort, and they're going to, um, provide the plan, which is allocating to different, uh, to different individuals or different other groups, and, um, what we could do is support it and let it happen, and, and let the administration kind of take the lead. And I really appreciated the Chair, um, kind of talking about the performance, you know, the feedback loop, and actually seeing how things are happening, maybe that wasn't there before. So, I, I really think that that's a key to the success. I completely agree with the Chair said. So, I will be supporting this. Um, I just had one question I was emailing, um, the Chair about, and that was really the contracts with the sports. Um, I know the Newburyport Youth Soccer Association has a 50-year contract, is it 50 or, what, 30?
30.
30-year contract, so, one, and I think they're the only one. So, I was really interested to hear, you know, how does that contract really fit in, you know, who does the contract management, but also, what does that mean for other, other kind of groups like the Pioneer League, who are going to be, like, sometimes the sole users of some of the fields, and making sure that whatever conditions are being sent, set up in those contracts are being adhered to, and being aware of what's in the contracts and looking at them. A 30-year contract, we don't get eyes on it very often, but my main thing is, for example, with NYSA, they're supposed to take care of their own trash at Cherry Hill, you know, things, the specific aspects that are really on the ownership of those organizations. I just want to make sure there's eyes on that so that we're not overburdening, like, the taxpayers by paying for things that were already contractually kind of arranged. So, that's my main thing, is that there is oversight on things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further, Counsel Wallace.
Thank you, President. Um, yeah, I just want to thank the administration for really all the hard work that they did, because they really got into the weeds of a department or moving a department elsewhere. Uh, because the, the Parks Department, under the previous administration, you know, the, the previous mayor had good intentions, but it was never a vetted plan, and this really gave the public a whole, you know, a whole experience to, to provide input, so that, I think that's great. Um, and actually, you gave us so much detail, kind of reminds me of, like, making the sausage, like, normally, we don't even get to see that kind of stuff, but that's the operations that happens behind the scene, and you pointed out, like, we're going to do this and going to do that, like, I, I think that was probably even more information that, that we needed, but it's, it shows that you thought through every different scenario. Um, and, and again, I think that, that to me is operations, you know, we always talk about the mayor, the executive branch should oversee operations, so, again, as fellow Counselor said, you know, we defer to, to the mayor and, and his staff. And the measurable goals, I think that's fantastic. Um, I think more departments should be doing that. Um, again, there's accreditation programs, I'll talk about that with the police a little bit later, but that, that's huge to actually self-reflect and find out where you can improve, where you can better spend your resources, so that's another great thing that came out of it. Um, I do see this as maybe a two-step process in that, we're at step one right now, and I, I've always thought that the maintenance should be part of DPS, just, it, it just makes sense because of the equipment and the sharing of resources. Um, I think the policy piece, coming from the Parks Commission, and strengthening that is also really good. And, and again, that the council gives the authority to the Parks Commission, so it actually comes from us, but we give it to them, if that makes sense. So, um, I think the one thing that could maybe be a Phase 2 type, type of activity is to continue to look at merging, um, some, some recreation, so that it's like a Parks and Rec and culture. I, I like the idea of Parks, Rec, and Culture, um, especially after hearing tonight, what some of, what's going on in the city and some exciting initiatives. Um, I think there's a lot of crossover. I know Newton has Parks, Rec, and Culture, um, Ipswich has that as well. So, when we're looking at space needs and sharing of, of, you know, um, directors and whatnot, I, I think there's opportunities out there. So, um, I will be supporting it, and I appreciate the hard work. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, I'm a little, um, I've always been, um, I just wanted to say that, um, while I was the dissenting vote in committee, um, because at the time, I, I did ask that we hold it until it leaves Scott results from the first round of DPS Director interviews. hold it until it leaves Scott results from the first round of DPS Director interviews. You know, that has since, of course, gotten updates for. And at this juncture, I do feel that we are at a time that there's been a tremendous amount of commendable work put into this. Quite a bit of public comment has been heavily considered and also put into this. And I, I have to agree, I think it's, it's time to let operations sort of give, give, give shot. And I also do sort of feel that it, you know, shouldn't be looked at or considered finite. There's, there is still fluctuation in DPS, and I do still feel that DPS and Parks going under DPS is an intertwined type of issue, but one that's going to have to sort itself out in time. And so, at this point, I will be supporting this plan moving forward, and giving it the opportunity to grow some legs. And I also do want to say that I do have a lot of faith in the new Port Parks Alliance that's been formed. I think there's a tremendous amount of encouragement and enthusiasm there, and I do hope they're able to chat and connect with all the great volunteers of the various parks and, and park organizations that currently exist. I know there's so many folks dedicated to different, you know, different things within all of our park properties. And I, I feel confident that everyone will have a voice at the table, and hopefully, all parks and organizations will get what they need, this new process. So that I will yield, and like I said, I will be supporting. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Donahue. Further discussion. Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I, I too will be supporting. This is, this is something that conceptually I've, I've really favored for quite some time. But I just wanted to echo a couple of the comments. First of all, to Mayor Riordan and to, to the team. I mean, I think that the, the last presentation was, was really excellent, and I, my favorite part was the scenarios at the end. I thought that was excellent presentation and very helpful. Most selfishly, I am an unabashed Ward Counselor, so I, I'm voting this because, at the end of the day, I really think, as the mayor said, it will make the parks better. And I have some parks in my ward, as I think all of us do. And selfishly, that's the name of the game. And so I'm looking forward to see, for example, you know, Perkins Park and some of the other nice things, amenities we have in my ward can be taken care of nicely. And I look forward to working on whatever the next thing is. So thank you to the mayor and his team.
Thank you, Counselor Zede. Further discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Council President. My comments are neither, should be interpreted in any way as in support of or non-support of our administration. My, my comments need to be looked upon as reflective of my constituency, who, who I hear a lot from, be it in Market Basket, or Snowshoeing in Marsley, or in the bank, or walking the streets downtown between stores. But, so here I have three points that, this is what I hear from my constituency, and I'd like to put them out. So first, in terms of the process, it's just not clear to many of my constituents, what's the genesis of the reorganization, what it's all about. Many feel that the first attempt at the reorganization was a distraction from the main effort, which was to fire a Parks Director. And this assertion was supported by the fact that it was pointed out that the organization, when it was, reorganization was attempted, it violated the charter, then it became a personnel issue, and the director was fired. So there was a little mushiness, mushiness in there, and it even got more convoluted with the, with the letting of the now-famous 2016 memo. So that's, that's one issue of my constituency. Secondly, in terms of the responding to the public input, the current plan is still missing, and it was mentioned by others, that the primary concern of, of my constituency is that there is no specific point person who is educated and experienced in the field of parks. So that, that person seems to be missing. And the plan has too many functions spread around. And what's very concerning at the moment is that there's an additional work being directed at NYSS. And as we well know, that organization doesn't have a permanent home. And there doesn't seem to be one on the horizon. And, and third, continuing this effort right now, with the fact that DPS has no director or deputy director or for that, you know, as I say, a Parks Director, it's, it's just inappropriate to continue on with this right now. Instead of waiting for the input of a new director to come in and have some direction on what this organization would look like, that person would be walking into a department that, that's undergoing change. So waiting until that position be filled would be good governing. Doing it now, I, I don't believe is good governing. And so on behalf of what I hear out there, my, my vote will be down.
Thank you, Council Vogel. For the discussion. Counselor Lane.
I've, I've been in support of this since the very beginning, and I just wanted to take this time to thank the mayor, his staff, and also Mike Hennessy and all the work that he's done. We've worked through some really tricky situations in the past couple of months, so I just wanted to thank all of them, and as well as Jamie Tucolo, and I wish him well in Salisbury. So with that, I'm going to be voting for this.
Thank you, Council Lane. Further discussion. Roll call.
It's a roll call approving the Parks Plan.
Hang on, one second. Jenny, do you have your, Council Donahue, do you have your hands up again?
Uh, no, let, let me take that down.
Okay.
I'll have the roll call.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, again, this is approving Order 417. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
By a vote of 10 to 1, plan is approved.
Nothing further.
Thank you, Council McCauley. General Government, we did not have the opportunity to meet due to the snowstorm last, last week. We will be meeting next Monday at 5:30. License and Permits, Counselor Vogel.
Uh, nothing tonight, but we'll be meeting next Monday at 7 o'clock.
Planning and Development, Counselor McC, Counselor Cameron.
Motion to approve Appointment.
378.
378. Thank you. Thank you. So this is the reapportionment of Greg Earls as the Building Commissioner. I'm sure many of you are familiar with him, because I think he was here earlier tonight. Hi, Greg. I know, I know he's still here. We, we did approve this 3 to 0 in committee last week, so again, it's a reapportionment. And, you know, in our discussion with the Building Commissioner, he talked a lot about, you know, how he approaches the job, not, not just from an enforcement side, but it's really about education and communication with, with property owners, building owners, on their responsibilities. I think many of us on the council have found him very communicative and good to work with when things get challenging, as they often do in, in such an environment. He does have the certifications that were required when he, when he assumed the job initially, and I think we had, you know, good, good, good conversation with him. And again, we did approve it 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Discussion. Roll call.
Roll call on the appointment of Greg Earls, which would be Appointment 378. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
11 to 0. Point passes.
Congratulations.
Counselor Cameron.
Thank you. There's nothing else to report, other than we have a joint hearing with the Planning Board this Wednesday at 7 o'clock at the Senior Center, where we'll be discussing suggested changes to the Intermodal Transportation Improvement Fund, and two items, which are also posted as Committee of the Whole, so if other counselors wanted to come. And this relates to proposals related to the Planning Board composition. So, so that'll be on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Counselor Wallace, Public Works and Safety.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We'll, we'll go in order here. Motion to approve Appointment 368, Kim Emmons to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Secretary.
All right. Ms. Emmons came in to our meeting in person last week, and she's lived in Newburyport about 10 years, has a couple of children, and she was originally interested in the Community Preservation Committee, but that didn't have any more openings. And so the Water and Sewer Commission also interested her. So it turns out there's an opening. So this is for a full position. There's two other positions that are for alternates, so I'll get to one of those tonight. But, so they're adding the alternates because that's allowed, apparently, and just will help them with their meetings. So back to, back to Kim, when asked, you know, about making some tough decisions on water bills or asking tough questions on a lot of the capital needs and projects, because there's a lot, she, she wasn't concerned at all. She has a business background and does mergers and acquisitions and contract negotiations, so she seemed, you know, up to the task and was excited to get started.
Further comments or questions?
Oh, and Committee approved it 3 to 0.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Council President. Her letter of interest in the packet does say Community Preservation Committee, so it was a little confusing, so I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means in terms of her interest, but I'm glad she's eager to, to join this commission. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. Further questions? Roll call.
Appointment of Kim Emmons. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
11 to 0. Appointment passes.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 381, Wilfred Paul Swoto as an alternate for the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
All right. Mr. Swoto, that goes by Paul at times. He has a couple different, couple different, Paul is the easiest to go by. He moved to Newburyport in 2019. He has three kids. He's an economics professor, so another numbers person. And he's not just concerned about the taste of the water, but he is concerned, when, when asked that question, but he's concerned about protecting the water supply in general, making sure that, you know, we have our water, and we have redundant systems, and, and a lot of the, the big projects that will be coming down the pike. He seemed very excited to, to get to work as well, and the Committee approved him 3 to 0.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call.
Appointment of Paul. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Next on the list, motion to receive and file Order 413.
Seven.
All right. The reason for this, it did come out of committee with an approval and a condition that it would pass with the parking, 3 to 0. But this was an order, and it's actually an ordinance change, so we're going to receive and file this. And then Counselor McCauley, or the Counsel from Ward 5, has resubmitted as an ordinance. So, so yes. And that, that's it. All right.
Discussion. Roll call.
On receiving and file Order 413, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
11 to 0. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve Order 421, National Grid, Virginia Lane, Story Ave.
Second.
Okay. This is to move one of, or a couple of the poles, or move one of the poles, and also install an easement for the work at the fire station. Unfortunately, in your packet, the drawing didn't, the, the sketch of the poles made it in, but the, the plan of the easement did not. It was in the packet previously. So it is out there in the public record. But Jordi Vining came in to, to talk about it. He said, the, the easement language is just your standard, very straightforward. And it came out of committee with an approval 3 to 0. And it was sponsored by Counsel McCauley, so I don't know if he has any follow-up he wants to provide. But again, I think it was just a pretty straightforward process.
Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of points of clarification. There's two poles there. One of the poles, both poles will stay, but one of the, the, the leads will be, will be removed and be replaced here. We did try to get it underground. We were unsuccessful in that. It will be overground overhead, but it is in a section where it is an overhead feed from Story Ave anyway, into the underground facilities. There will be, it's new placement at 50 dot 1, there will be an underground feed there. So everything within the complex itself will be underground. It'll just be an overhead feed on that. And where it goes right now is public green space, so there shouldn't be any issues with the public or a sidewalk or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Actually, I don't know if this was mentioned in committee, but, you know, I think Mass Electric was the old name, but do we need to keep referring to that name instead of National Grid? Is that because of the arrangement with easement? Did you guys mention that, or?
Some of these old contracts go back hundreds of years, and they stay with the original names. They haven't actually made all the updates and connections. I know myself, I've been in a company that's been merged four times. We still use old language because of legal documents that haven't been upgraded. I know for a fact, Mass Electric is the same issue here. They haven't upgraded their, all of their contractual languages.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. If I may direct a question to the Chair of the Committee. So in years past, when we've had issues with National Grid and poles, we always sort of held their feet to the fire, granting their request until they took care of the poles. And I'm talking about the two poles on High Street. I, I don't see any reference to it in here. Did that, did we have a communication about that? Did that come, did we get a letter from that, from Ken? It's not in here, so you don't have to go looking.
No, I never got an official communication. I mean, he had sent me some emails, but I have contacted, I got in touch with John Butler, and I said, I just, what's, what's the process? Because I'm still new to this. What's the process for resident issues with poles? And he gave me to Joe, somebody else, who's out of the office, but he's going to get back to me. So whether I send him a list, or if they have a list they can provide, hopefully, we can get some clarity and, and come up with some sort of process in the future. So.
Counsel Vogel.
Yeah, just to, just to follow up. Again, in years past, we used to have multiple double poles. And we used to, Barry Connell, Counselor Connell at the time, just held National Grid to, feet to the fire, and said, you're not getting any permission until these poles start to come down. So that was always the leverage.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah. So if you could help out, that would be great. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Oh, just, just one follow-up.
Counsel Wallace.
Yeah, I, I, in, in the, yeah, I can definitely follow up. I think for this, right now, this is the fire station.
Sure.
And I think we need to keep this process going.
I understand.
But I'm happy to help out to, to make this efficient and clear and work with DPS if it's them. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Zede.
I just want to offer to help. I know Joe quite well from my, all my Ward Counsel work on everything from gas meters to silly telephone poles. And they really do get hung up a lot by the Verizon Comcast, this sort of thing. So Joe has been able to untangle some knots, so I'm happy to offer some help on that.
Okay.
If you need it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You should share that with all the Ward Counselors, because I can assure you I could use it too.
We'll buy him a holiday gift this year from all of us. That's the way to do it.
Perfect. Sounds like a plan. Any, so, any other questions? Roll call.
Approval of the easement of 421. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
All right. No, no other items on the agenda here, but I just did want to fill in. We did bring in Marshall Murray, just to have a discussion. So in the same, same way into his meetings, we're going to continue that tradition. So just a really nice talk with Marshall Murray. He talked about the accreditation process. I know the mayor had mentioned it, but every three years, they have to go through it, and they, they work through a set of standards, and it's accredited through the state. So it's like in Massachusetts, police accreditation. And they get feedback and they edit, you know, their processes or whatever they need to do. And it looks like they're on their way to being accredited once again, and they'll announce it. But it's just, it's, again, it's like the measurable goals with the parks. It's just great to see the departments, you know, doing self-evaluations, trying to follow procedures and policies. And he did say that all of their policies and procedures are on their website. So that's, that's kind of exciting. And I, no pun intended, but I give them a lot of credit for, for doing that. Yeah. Another thing we talked about was the recent swatting incident in Amesbury. He actually had a recording of the phone call. It was hard to hear over Zoom, but those of us here could hear it. It was pretty, pretty scary. You know, it was a hoax, but, you know, you could hear gunshots in the background. But what he did say, what was interesting, is if it were a real shooter, they would be getting multiple calls because people would just be calling in. So when they only get one shooter, they, you know, they kind of have a sense. But, you know, it's, it's something that's happening across the country and that they have to deal with. Let's see, what else do we, we had some questions. I just asked about the liaison program. So the ward counselors know that each ward has a police officer, sergeant assigned to them, and it's worked out really, really well. You can just contact them, and they help you with issues in your ward. And I believe that's posted on their website as well. But it's just a nice reminder, too, to the public that if you feel like you want to talk to the police, you know, you can go through your ward counselor, and you might, it's a little bit more personal if, if there's an issue. Then we also talked about enforcement in the parks. And, you know, they said that they're, they're happy to do enforcement. I'm sure they check it out every so often. But it's something that if there's concerns, and Counselor Donahue, or the Counselor from Ward 2 had mentioned enforcement of dogs, she has that issue. You know, we can work with the liaisons and, you know, kind of work these things out. But the, with the dogs, though, it's also animal control. So there's that piece to work with. But, so he's aware of some of these concerns that we have. And then we talked about capital needs, and the two cruisers, I believe, are in here. And then I have to apologize, I don't have notes for what else he mentioned. Does anybody remember?
Dispatch.
Dispatch Center.
Dispatch Center.
I wasn't even there. They needed it.
So thank you. So we'll be seeing, you know, some of that coming in for the CIP. So anyways, it was great, great to talk to him. And also note, we're going to be meeting Tuesday next week, March 7th, at 5:00 p.m. And we are going to be talking about water. And we're going to invite some staff and Water and Sewer Commission, probably talk about sewer too, but water's always the big, the big one in some of the projects. And also Senator Ives' letter came into the packet, so that might be a good time to have a big old discussion and see what, you know, what we can learn and what we can help out with as we go into budget season. And that is all.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Good of the order. All right. Court Jones, we have executive session.
Executive session. We would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation with the city solicitor that's pursuant to 30A Section 21. And President, are you planning on coming back out?
No.
So when the council is over the executive session, it will not be coming back out into?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Kahn.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
We're in executive session.